Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. This is the regular meeting of the full city council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're being livestreamed on the city's public access station and Zoom. We're being recorded. Thank you to Hoyoke Media. This is also being translated. And we're coming to you live this evening. And the clerk will call the roll. Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Yes, here.
Givner?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Greeney?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy and Bledy?
Here.
Acasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city council.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, so first up, we have, we don't have any public hearings. So we have public comment. If you are here tonight, I believe we have... Mr. Weinberg? Please feel free to step to the microphone and make sure that the microphone is on the top switch there. Yep. And just to let you know, so please state your name and address for the public record. And you will have two minutes to address the council. We don't engage with you, but you have the opportunity to address us. And I have this fancy digital clock here that I'm going to start so you can keep track of your time. And I will let you know when time's up. Does that sound good? All right, so here we go.
David Weinberg, 3 Hillcrest Avenue, Hoyoke. I gave out some sheets. And all information is taken off the MIFAs. 990 IRS tax returns. The Victory Theater in 2023 year-end paid $96,000 for lobbying. You need to ask Sanders to whom the money was given and why. This is a lot of money for such a small organization. I'm just showing also that $49,000 travel expenses for year-end 2022 and $950 for program service revenue is real. Sanders paid, was paid $49,000 compensation tax year 2021. I was not mistaken when I last said that. The chart shows throughout the year Sanders had has excessive program service expenses to get and gets back very little money in return. That shows the Victory Theater project should not be supported by the city or state and should only continue to be privately financed. I don't want my taxes to be used for it. On the tables, some figures in the two MIFAs tables are suspect and may be false. Sanders needs to explain them more fully. I will return in January with more information. Any questions?
You have 30 seconds left. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Councilors, we did receive a document this evening that was handed out by the individual coming to public comment. So I wanted to see, just to make sure we're complying with all everything. Does anyone, should we receive it? Or what would the body like to do? Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication from Mr. Weinberg and submit it as a late file communication to the council.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive the communication from Mr. Weinberg and accept it as a late file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here this evening for public comment? Whether that's, I don't see anyone in person, but we're going to check on Zoom. We'll make sure Jeffrey gets a copy of that so that he can put it in the records. Okay. Laid on the table. Counselor Devine?
Yes, I'd like to take item one off the table and have another vote.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take item one off the table. I'll just read it into the record. Ordered that there be a transfer in the fiscal year 2025 of $108,695.56 as follows: From cannabis stabilization, $108,695,056 to solicitor claims and damages. This is the, this was tabled at our last meeting. So this would be the second reading.
Okay. Motion to take, to...
We have to pass the motion and take it off the table.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So the motion was made and seconded to take item one off the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Make a motion, a...
Well, how about we do a show of hands? All those in favor?
Of taking...
Of taking the item off the table? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay. So...
I believe we reconsidered our votes on this because it was defeated the last time. So I think we're back at first reading.
Okay.
I'll make a motion and pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Devine? Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, Counselor Devine?
I think we all know what this is about. We've talked about it many times, so I don't want to be repetitious. I think we just need to take the vote, see where it stands, and then go from there.
Okay, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will just say for the record again, this is an executive session. And until we can talk publicly about the reasons why we would be spending this money, I will not be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bacon. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I'll be as brief as possible. There's other resolutions of this other than the proposed resolution and the payment of this money. So I'm, at this point, I'm still a no until we explore the better options on solving this question. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay, so the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion to pass second reading? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. And the clerk will call the roll.
Who's voting first tonight?
Oh, sorry. Counselor Sullivan is voting first tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, second time in seven years.
It's killing it. This is your year, Mike. Just know it.
Law of averages, right?
So the motion was made to pass the second reading. And the clerk will call the roll. If you're voting yes, you are voting to approve the transfer. Sullivan?
No.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
No.
Jordan?
No.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Acasio?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Seven yeas, six nays. Okay.
Motion to...
Well, with that, you have not passed it.
So make a motion to put it back on the table.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to lay the item on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Point of order, do we have to also name that we have to reconsider to lay on the table?
Okay. Motion has, well...
Do we need to?
No. What we did was what we usually do.
Motion to reconsider our actions and place it on the table.
Okay.
Second.
Yes, under discussion, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, just quick question, more a comment briefly, but this has now been defeated twice. So the question is, shouldn't there, I mean, we can reconsider and put it back on the table, but maybe there's a conversation for their meeting or whatever they're going to do at this point. But explore other options.
Okay, totally. I'm just kind of going with the will of the body here.
Understood, yep.
So is there any other discussion that we want to have right now? Do we want to send this back to committee? Do we, oh. Hi, sorry. Attorney Bissonette has his hand up.
Make a motion, suspend the rules, and have Counselor Bissonette speak.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, Counselor Bartley?
We're not supposed to debate motions to reconsider, motions to lay on the table. Those are non-debatable. So as much as I'd like to hear from Mike, our rules and the rules say we can't do it. We're just supposed to take the vote and move on. Debate time is over. Debate time was when the Finance Chair made the motion to pass it. So that, that expired, and now we move on. We don't debate it at this point. And I'll stand corrected if somebody's been here longer than me.
Robert's rules.
Okay, there's some, I mean, it's not, it's a non-debatable thing. A motion to reconsider or a motion to lay on the table. Can't debate it.
Okay. Well, I guess tonight's Robert's rules will be what we follow.
Makers can withdraw their motion.
I, again, I'm facilitating the meeting, so I'm just, I'm just here facilitating the meeting. I will, if, if that's the, does anyone want to reconsider their motion? Okay, so I'm not hearing anything? We'll go on to the next one. And Counselor Bissonette, we can check in offline. It's the kind of meeting tonight's kind of...
They can always refile it.
Madam, Madam President, what I did here was motion to reconsider.
Yep.
And to lay it on the table.
Yep.
And I think we should...
We are going to vote on that. I'm just kind of trying to bring it in.
Thank you, thank you.
And not react.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so on the motion, we're going to vote on this. We're going to vote on this. Can I help you? Yes, I'm sorry, I can't.
Point of order, I'm just trying to get a sense of process here. I'm not debating. If this city solicitor was potentially trying to respond to the point of order to give procedure...
Absolutely not.
And we have the will, but it's not what the...
That is different than debate.
Not that we couldn't. We should hear what a solicitor wants to say.
Well, we would have to suspend the rules to allow...
And someone did that.
Okay, so why don't we vote on suspending the rules? And we'll see if we, if that passes.
Motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the attorney to speak. Counselor Bissonette, thanks for being here.
Okay, can we vote? We got to vote on the motion to suspend the rules all first.
Got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Can I see the show of hands for no?
For no or yes?
For no.
Can I, can, do I have to? Can I do what I want for on that one?
There you go.
Okay, so that doesn't pass. Attorney Bissonette?
Here, Madam President.
Hold on, the motion to reconsider, excuse me, the motion to suspend the rules to allow him to speak didn't pass. So we're not going to hear from Mr. Bissonette.
Okay, great.
It was eight to five, correct?
Yes.
Eight to five, okay, that's not two-thirds.
Two-thirds to let him speak? Since when?
In, or, other than a member of this body, you have no authority to speak before the council unless the council suspends the rules to allow the city solicitor to speak. A motion was made to suspend the rules. All votes to suspend the rules are two-thirds. It didn't pass. We move on.
I really only think it needs a majority and not two-thirds.
I agree.
That's Robert's rules of order.
Okay.
Regardless, is it, does it make sense for cities, for city councils to prevent the council from hearing advice from our city solicitor? Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should.
But this is non-debatable.
All right, we're moving on. We're moving on. I'm done. I'm done. And this is how the meeting's going to go. This is how we decided the meeting's going to go. So thank you very much. You have set the tone. I will follow the tone. Got it? Item number two, is there anything that we want to do with item number two? No. Item number three?
Vote on number one.
Motion to take item three off the table?
Number three isn't on the table. I'd like to make a motion that it be received in...
I didn't, okay. That it be received.
And approved. That's the minutes of our last meeting?
I know it is. I, can I read it?
Sure.
Counselor? Item number three is from City Clerk Brenna Murphy Leary and Administrative Assistant Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, the minutes from the September 18th, 2024 meeting. Motion's been made and seconded to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four?
Be received and sent to finance?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to send item four to finance. Memorandum of Agreement by and between the City of Hoyoke and Nage Clerical Union. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five is from Linda Bacon, Sexual Harassment HPD Investigation of Complaints Against Manuel Reyes.
A motion to receive and send to public service and with the brief comment that this had been submitted by a member of the public and it should have been posted prior because it is a public document. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six, Grant Completion Form for the Fiscal Year 24 Firefighter Safety Equipment Grant.
Be received?
Motion has been made and seconded to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, from Board of Fire Commissioners, Meeting Minutes from August 19th, 2024.
Motion to receive?
Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight?
Be received?
From Stephen Superba, Email to Council Accompanying Document on Investigation of Complaint Against Manuel Reyes. Motion...
Send to public service?
Motion was made and seconded to receive and send to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Petitions, Speed Hump Petition from Hampshire Street Residents.
Motion to receive and send to ordinance with a copy to who?
DPW.
DPW.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive and send a copy to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 10, Petition of Peter Hanush for Renewal of a Secondhand License at 50 Hoyoke Street.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve so long as he's got all his bills paid.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and approve, assuming all of his bills are paid. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, that one needs a roll call. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The clerk will call the roll.
Sullivan? Sullivan?
Yes, could you read that again for me?
It's the secondhand license renewal.
Oh, yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you pass it. President's Report. A reminder that we have the special meeting for the School Committee tomorrow, Wednesday, October 2nd. Residents of Ward 1 and Ward 4 that are interested are still able to submit a letter of intent and their resume, though it is not required. You can show up. If you do, please send it to the Personnel Office. They will forward it to the rest of us. There are more details on the city website. Everyone should have received all the folders from Jeffrey and Kelly. So that'll be tomorrow at 6:00 PM. And there's a reminder that we will not have a meeting on Tuesday, November 5th due to Election Day. The dedication of Joe McGivern Way is Saturday, October 5th, the Saturday at 3:30 PM at Beach Street near the entrance of the YMCA. Just a reminder to RSVP to the Mayor's Office for the Volleyball Hall of Fame Reception and Ceremony. We are going to have our tax classification hearing on Wednesday, November 6th. The vote on the tax rate, setting the tax rate, I'm working with the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office and just all, the Assessor's Office, everyone, just to find the date, but it will likely be either November 20th or 21st. So we're trying to just kind of coordinate that. A lot of it depends on the state giving us the information that we need. The Polish Flag Raising is this Friday at 11:30 AM in the Mayor's Office. Always a great time, great group of people. And the Hoyoke Gas and Electric Public Power and Public Natural Gas Week Celebration is Wednesday, October 9th from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Hoyoke Merry Round. And just a reminder that the comprehensive plan, there are two more listening sessions Saturday, October 26, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Heritage State Park. And then the last one is Thursday, November 21st from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. I don't have the location yet, but looking forward to that. Anyone else have anything to add? Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, I'd like to have the council go on record in support of the young lady who was hit by a car on Main Street. I think that we should pray for her family and hopefully that she will be okay.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, Madam President, what was your thoughts on the rescheduling of November 5th? Did you have a thought in mind as to when you'd like to have that meeting?
So last year, I was looking at the schedule for last year, and we ended up doing it that Thursday, which would be the...
7th.
7th. Our folks, if anyone has like a big, strong objection to that for whatever reason, reach out to me.
How about one thought is if we're going to be down on the 6th? That's usually pretty quick. The tax class, want to do it after that?
I was trying to be mindful of the day after the election.
Okay.
Just recognizing that on the clerk's office, but you know, I am open to whatever the will of the body feels. Counselor Devine?
I appreciate what you just said about the day after the election because the, especially this is a huge election and the clerk's office will be busy. So I'm sure Brenna will appreciate another day to have our meeting.
Anyone else? Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. I met a gentleman this weekend at a, at the church at the corner of Dwight, and he was mentioning that Rusty's Place is having its 10th Annual Out of Darkness Event. It's one of the four on Saturday at Rusty's, and it's for remembering people who have committed suicide. They also have an associated walk annually. So I thought that was very interesting, and they are taking donations for their raffle. Also, Roka's having an open house tomorrow. They've moved to a new location on Race Street, and they do a lot of good work with, with young men in the area. And what else? Oh, and tomorrow Caddaldo has their ribbon cutting. Yay.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Reports of Committees. Item 11 is the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that an ordinance be created that establishes a public process for approving the installation of raised crosswalks that includes input from safety departments and the public and a determination from engineering. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Hello, good evening. This order was adopted by Counselor, I mean, not adopted, it was filed by Counselor Bacon. We took it up last week at our ordinance committee meeting, and it made sense to have the conversation around creating some sort of process, but I'll allow Counselor Bacon to speak more on the issue.
Thank you. So I filed this order because there developed a lot of confusion after raised crosswalks were installed through a different process that didn't include a public hearing or notice to a butters. And as it turned out, the state regs are very similar for raised crosswalks as they are for speed humps. And so I filed the order because at the moment, we're looking at needing to remove a couple of the raised crosswalks. So it ended up being a cost to the city in two ways. So I was looking to avoid that in the future. And our interim engineer was very helpful and gave language. And then our law department tied it to the speed hump language because they're very similar. So that's the legal form that we have for us. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Givner?
Madam President, I just wanted to ask a question to Counselor Bacon about this.
Yeah.
Why, why are we trying to remove raised crosswalks?
So as it turns out, apparently this project had gone through three different hands. And so when the interim engineer that is now looking at all the projects received it, it was sort of two-thirds of the way done. So she didn't review the actual eligibility criteria for the locations. But then after they were put in, people gave feedback and concerns of one sort and another to the engineer in DPW, who would normally have been heard from if we had done it in the similar way that we do speed humps.
Got it. Thank you. Anyone else? So would your motion be to...
Motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
And so the motion's passed the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
And the motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt the order. Vote for you.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.[1591.91]
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've passed it. Thank you. Item twelve, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that Hoyok doubled the tax abatement for veterans as authorized by the HERO Act, expanding veteran property tax exemptions. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. This is another order that I believe was filed by Counselor Vacan. Am I correct?
Maybe Counselor-
And Graney together. And ideally, it was just to match some of the state policies that have raised or recommended increases around some of the tax exemptions for veterans and their property. And we voted for, I believe, four zero to adopt it. If any other counselors that signed on would like to expand, feel free to do so.
Sounds good. Okay, so that would be the-
Motion to pass the first reading then.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
And the motions, that, the motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt the tax abatements for veterans.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. With that, you've passed it. Awesome. Item number thirteen, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order to explore creating a zoning and code enforcement position in the building department. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
So, this order, we took it up last week as well. This order, it's an older order, I believe, that it's complied with because we have already gone through this process. I think we've already created the position and someone, I think, has already filled the position to my understanding. But the order is complied with.
Anyone else? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Ordinance, we're heading on to finance. Item fourteen, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer of five thousand sixty-nine dollars and thirteen cents as follows. Auditor, professional accountant, HPD to Personnel, Professional Services. Recommended that the order be adopted and pass the first reading.
Motion to pass the first reading.
Thanks, Counselor Devine. Go ahead and give your update.
This was a, they came in the other day and it was a really, it's going to be a phenomenal thing for the city and for the employees. And what it is, it's, and Counselor Jordan can probably briefly talk about it as well. And what it is, it's a program, I'm not sure if everybody has this on their desks or not, but it's a program called NAVEX, N-A-V-E-X, and that enables city employees who may have a problem and they need to speak to somebody that is not their immediate supervisor or their department head. They can go to this company. It's all confidential and they can make complaints during, to that company. And we all thought it was a pretty good thing to have and it's certainly not that expensive, so we all voted in favor of that.
Any other, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I would, I just wanted to compliment personnel and the mayor for following up on this request that I had made. This is relative to the city having a compliance program specifically, just so, you know, people appreciate effectively, this is a see something, say something type program. If concerned citizens see something that they're concerned about, they'll have ability to call. If an employee sees something that they're concerned about, for a whole host of different things that one could imagine could, could take place, they can report something. So, this is going to be excellent. In fact, I got to say, I was impressed at how inexpensive it was. It was about four thousand dollars a year and there's about a one thousand dollar initial startup cost, which is why the five thousand dollar bill. So, this is a long time coming that the city needs. I would like to encourage the city leadership to advertise this, to make sure we have posters up in our various departments, to make sure that it's up on the city website. And ideally, I'd like to encourage that maybe we put something out on the gas and electric in a mailing to the residents so that they have an ability, if they're concerned about seeing, if they see something inappropriate, illegal, whatever, you have an ability to be heard. And it's not going to be, you know, the stereotypical, people think, well, people just cover for each other and whether that's true or not, and it's largely not true. But the citizens will have an ability and fellow employees will have an ability to be able to say things without retaliation. So, this is, this is very encouraging. And again, these will be investigated. It's not that, you know, people take everything as verbatim truth. These, this program will then filter these to personnel and they will do an investigation where appropriate to screen out things and then get to the heart of the matter. The other thing that I liked is that the mayor and the council will have reporting as to the number of these type of complaints that come forward and the types of complaints that are coming forward. So, I'm very encouraged about this. This is long overdue and this will be a real plus for accountability in Hoyok.
Thank you. Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just curious, are there any other municipalities around here that use this program that we know of?
I have no idea. We didn't ask that question.
That didn't come up in the discussion, that particular company.
Okay, thank you.
How about the background of the company itself?
That was discussed in committee.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks so much. Okay. So, the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've passed it. Thank you. Item fifteen, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer of fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars as follows. Planner two to planner one. And Counselor Devine?
Make a motion to pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading under discussion.
Yeah. Aaron Vega came in and discussed this with us. This is the second time that he's, he's come in. And what he's trying to do, and I think it's a very good idea and the Finance Committee voted in favor of it as well, is it would make more sense to bring the planner one into teaching and training better than they're able to do right now. If you were to hire a planner two, it would take two to three months of training. So, this is something he wants to do for mapping and researching for the planning board, which is desperately needed, and also to site plan review and zoning review. And it was a very positive meeting, so I urge everybody to pass that.
Anyone else? All right, so the motion was made and seconded to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the transfer from planner two to planner one.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Ten yeas, three nays.
With that, you've passed it. Thank you. Item sixteen, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer of thirty-three thousand dollars as follows. Pays engineer, pays civil, or senior civil engineer to professional engineering services. Recommended that the, or, sorry, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading under discussion.
This is something we do periodically, of course, because we only have an interim city engineer and this transfer is needed for the months of September and October. And I do want to compliment her, Victoria, that she has been doing a wonderful job. And maybe one of these days, we'll actually have our own city engineer. But anyways, it was passed by the committee.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath Smith and then Counselor Jordan.
I just wanted to name that we're not the only city that's been struggling getting us an engineer. And I was looking at an article around Westfield, which also has been struggling. And one of the things that they did recently is they actually dropped the requirement that they have a professional certification so they could be an engineer in training and then be hired and then work their way towards getting their professional certificate that they needed. I wonder if, just putting it out there, because folks I know have been saying, well, I don't want to, you know, keep doing this. There's got to be other options. Maybe the mayor needs to hear that the council would support other options because currently, I think that that's not possible under the way that the position is crafted and intentionally so. But given where we are at, I just wanted to put it out there that this may be something that the council wants to consider if this continues. It's now been how many months?
Many.
Eleven?
I don't know.
A whole year? This has been going on and on. And so, maybe we need to say, here is an idea we have that we're throwing on the table. Maybe we need to consider another path forward. Because otherwise, this is the only path forward is to continue funding this the way that we are. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Jordan, then Counselor Bartley, then Counselor Rivera.
Yep. Appreciate the out-of-box thinking on that. The only thing I would say that would be of concern there is, I'm about to point out, this is probably costing us seventy-ish thousand dollars more per year doing it this way. The flip side of that, though, is if you have someone who doesn't have the credentials that's signing off on different plans and God forbid, something failed, it costs us a hell of a lot more than seventy grand in liability to the city if some bridge failed or road failed and then they said, oh, well, we had the person with no credential. He was, he or she was in training, but we saved seventy grand. Yeah, but, you know, my car ran off the road. You know, that, that's the dilemma or the pipe collapsed. I, I will say, though, we do have to, I don't know if we have to get a headhunter or what we're doing here, but we did increase the salary. We've done a lot of different things to incentivize to get this position filled. I will say, it is concerning that, you know, we're now up to paying, you know, an extra seventy grand a year doing contracted services. I mean, I suppose there might be some savings vis-à-vis benefits and different things like that in retirement, but this isn't a long-term solution. So, whatever, you know, if we have to go and help get a, an agency to help us find this type of person, sometimes when you get these difficult-to-fill positions, you know, companies will use services. Even if you pay, you know, thirty grand as a finder's fee or forty grand to, to find somebody to fill the position, it, it might be worth it long-term because at this rate, you know, it's, it's gone on long enough. Again, we're lucky that the person that they selected, Counselor Devine's a hundred percent correct. She's doing a great job. The only problem is, you know, it's not a long-term solution and we need somebody permanent. I don't know, maybe if we have somebody who's newer, has to have the credentials, but newer. I mean, we do have the benefit of having a superintendent who is an engineer too. So, we, you know, can work in an apprenticeship type of relationship. I, I don't know, maybe, but we'll see, we'll see how it plays out. Certainly, voting for this tonight, but I think they need to really think about becoming more aggressive in the search and maybe bring in some professionals to help us find some people.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, after, after that, so, so here's, here's out of the box for you, Madam President. Out of the box is, you've got a, you've got a, well, first of all, this body voted twelve to one to dumb down the superintendent. So, take away the, the need for an engineer. So, we've already done that. So, if, if we're going to get on our horse and say, you know, I don't like that stuff, okay. Well, you, you voted for it last year, twelve to one. So, to dumb down the, the professional credentials. Out of the boxes, you've got a superintendent now who is an engineer. Why can't that superintendent fill that position and shift them over, give them the same pay rate and then go find a superintendent? But really, out of the box would be, if you've got, as the counselor from Ward Seven said, you've got a situation in Western Hoyok. Guys, is it that complicated that we can't figure out a shared service? Is, is, is that not even within the realm of thinking? I mean, you, you have two mayors that both need an engineer, can't get an engineer. Why don't you figure out a pathway to get a shared service? I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure why, that, that's out of the box. You know, dumbing down a job isn't, isn't my favorite way to do it, but that's why I voted no two years ago on that. But I will say that, that if you're going to, this is going to, this is going to go in perpetuity. And, and it's, and we're going to get excuse after excuse. And I'm going to hear at some point that we don't pay people enough. Okay. Figure out a game plan for such a critical position. Never mind this, this, this consulting firm. Talk to Mr. McCabe, Mr. Garcia can talk, they talk all the time. Maybe they can figure something out between two of them. I don't know. But there's got to be a better way than doing this, so consequently, I'm going to stick with my no vote.
Thank you, Counselor Rivera.
Thank you. I'm going to vote yes on this, but I, Counselor Jordan and Counselor Bartley kind of spoke on the issues that I kind of was going to bring up. For me is, one, is the cost, it's costing more than it would have cost for us to actually have someone in the position and it's going to eventually cost us significantly more if this continues. But we're in a situation where we have to just, this is what we have to do. But the other one is, is exploring other avenues with regards to sharing resources with other municipalities around. Maybe we can pay them to, like, just to offset costs or together, we work and collaborate, just like other municipalities do with regional schools and other districts. But I don't want to reiterate what you guys already said and thank you for stealing my thumb there.
Thank you. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, several good ideas that came up tonight. The only problem has been, wasn't the salary. This is a union position and a lot of people that are applying for this job do not want to belong to the union. And we have no say in that. We have to be extremely careful what we say and how we say it as far as the union goes. So, that's, to me, is the holdup. And I'm not criticizing the union, that's just the way it is. But hopefully, we will, you know, hopefully, the mayor will take up some of these suggestions. But again, it's a union position and that does make it a little different and harder to hire sometimes.
Thank you. Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, I, I don't know if it's possible or not, but perhaps the mayor or the people could reach out to some of the local schools of engineering to see if some of the recent graduates might be interested or some of the people who have graduated from these institutions are looking for work. That might be another area that we might look that we haven't looked before. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else? Counselor McGrath Smith?
Just briefly, one of the other issues with this position currently is that the city engineer is open and so is a civil engineer. So, I can't hear you. My fault. Because we have two open positions. You have someone who is, maybe be wary, looking at, okay, I'm jumping in, but I have no supporting staff other than the tapped DPW superintendent slash, he's also stepping in to a, a lot of that role right now alongside Victoria Hool. So, I, I do think that part of it is not just the union and it's, it's not just the pay. It's also that it's, it's a city where there's a lot that we're trying to accomplish currently and they'd be walking in without a staff. And that was one of the main issues we had with Chris Baker. It was not simply pay when they left to take their next job. It was also directly related to the amount of staff support they would have. So, it is a timing issue and I, I worry, looking at the city, what we set up sometimes with timing. Because right now, the DPW director is holding on to a lot because we don't have an engineer, although we do have an interim engineer, I believe, is doing a good job. But we also don't have that second engineer. And so, you know, those people then get tired. They get worn out. They then step down. Then we're facing a situation where we don't have now also a DPW director. Right, then it becomes even harder to launch people into those positions. So, I do think that the time is, is nigh to be creative and I'm, I'm open, right? I know maybe my out-of, out-of-the-box thought is not a popular one, but I'm open to other ideas because what we're doing now is not working. And we not, we don't just have one position to fill. We have two in order to really make engineering work. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, just real quick, this is probably going to come up again in October for November and December and I would urge people, we'll put it into finance, that these things that are being discussed tonight should be discussed in finance, so we'll probably have it again come November.
Okay. All right, so the motion was made and seconded to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion made and seconded to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve the transfer.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Out of the-
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, one nay.
Okay, that you've passed it, thank you. Item seventeen is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city council accept the provisions of the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, EMPG grant for five thousand dollars, no match, and authorize the establishment of a fund related to the grant. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Uh, motion was made and seconded to pass the first reading, Counselor Devine.
Yeah, um, we, Jeff Trask unfortunately couldn't be here, but Counselor Jordan made a great suggestion to pass this and get in touch with him and then let everybody know what this is about, so I can do that now. It's the Holyoke Fire Department has been awarded the Massachusetts Energy Management Agency, MEMA, an EMPG grant in the amount of five thousand dollars. According to Jeff, this grant will be used to purchase uniforms and gear and technology for the Emergency Operations Center.
All right, any other discussion or comments? Okay, so the motion was made and seconded to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of accepting the grant.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grinny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've approved it. Item eighteen, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer of two hundred fifty thousand dollars as follows, patrolman and sergeant to overtime. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, motion to pass the first reading.
Motion was, uh, to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, uh, under discussion?
Yeah, we had, um, good discussion and, um, Counselor Jordan, I believe, started it off with, uh, asking the chief, was he on target? Um, and he certainly said he was. Um, and that the surplus in the patrolman and sergeant line items were due to vacancies and they're in the process of hiring those. Um, let's see if there's, they, um, as soon as they're, uh, trained and available, it'll probably be in December of twenty twenty-four. Um, so we passed it with, um, no problems whatsoever.
Any other discussion or comments? Counselor Rivera?
Just, um, what is the target, Counselor Jordan?
The what?
Cause I, you had mentioned, uh, Counselor, uh, Devine, you had said-
Uh, Counselor Jordan had asked if he was on target-
Yeah.
-from last year and he said he was.
One million.
Okay, and do we, through the chair, do we have a number as to where we're at now?
He said he feels it's gonna be, it's tracking to that again for this year based on, obviously, we're only this number of months into the fiscal year, but his, he believes it will be that or less.
Okay, thank you.
And it may fluctuate from time to time.
Anyone else? All right, so the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Uh, motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting, uh, to, uh, accept the transfer.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grinny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With that, you've passed it. Item nineteen is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer of twenty-two thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars uh, from police captains to dispatchers and principal clerks. The, uh, motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, this, this is part of a union contract, uh, for dispatchers and clerks and it's a retro, um, pay. And it's, uh, it says one captain is associated with the grant, so that's why we passed it.
Thank you, anyone else?
Believe they're, just for the record, they're using Captain Cruz's money now that he's in the chief position. So they're using his old salary to fund this.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so the motion was, uh, to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve the transfer.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grinny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith? Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thanks, with that, you've passed it. Item twenty, Committee on Finance, uh, that the council accept the HPD equipment donation, thermo scientific tronark, trunark, handheld narcotics analyzer, fair market value forty thousand dollars eight hundred seventy-one ninety, ninety-one cents. Uh, motions to- Yep, motions, uh, to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine?
This is a tremendous, um, thing that was donated to the city, to the police department um, by the Fraser Integrated, Integrated Counts Consulting LLC. It's, um, um, a group that, they donated the property with a fair market value of over forty thousand dollars, representing the actual purchase price of the donated property, which was purchased by the group on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, it's my birthday, from Noble Supply and Logistics with delivery expected around June thirtieth. Um, and it's, uh, the police, uh, are very happy with this. And I'm trying to see my notes. Unless, Counselor Jordan, you have anything else to add that, um-
Other than it was a gift in honor of Counselor Devine's birthday, um, I would only add that, uh,
Big gift.
I, I believe the gentleman that has this company is formerly of Holyoke and there's a Holyoke connection there and it was really thoughtful of him to, uh, to make this donation. So, uh, we were just thrilled and, and, uh, we made it a point. I know the chief will, but they're gonna definitely extend a nice letter of thanks and, and, uh, give him the recognition he rightly deserves for this very thoughtful gift.
Thank you, Counselor Rivera.
I just wanted to know what it is. Like what it-
Um, my, my basic, and again, not a scientist, but my understanding is it's a, it's some sort of analyzer gun, like a laser, that you can point at different drugs and it has a capacity to tell what, if that, what kind of drug it is.
Without what's in there.
Yeah, exactly, and it'll tell you like the different chemical compounds of the particular item.
Thank you. Uh, so the-
Motion to pass the second-
Motion to, the motion was made and seconded to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, was that a motion to pass the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to accept, uh, the-
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grinny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith? Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, with that, you've passed it. Item twenty-one was tabled in committee. Um, item twenty-two, uh, thank you, Finance, we're switching over to DGR. Um, item twenty-two is the Committee on Development Government Relations, uh, that, uh, was referred an order, uh, for Mayor Joshua Garcia, Elms College lease agreement for the use of McKenzie Fields. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Um, I'd like to go, um, make a motion to take up twenty-two and twenty-three together.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rolls and take up items twenty-two and twenty-three as a package. Um, item twenty-three is, uh, the lease for the Valley Blue Sox for the use of McKenzie Stadium. Both orders were recommended to be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, we had some discussion about these leases. They are annual renewals. Um, it was brought, it was, there was some concern that these are brought to us kinda after the fact. Um, both leases were either completed or, um, close to completion for this season. Um, but after insistence, after we insisted that these be submitted to DGR for approval before the leases start, um, we, we were insured, uh, by Tom Reynolds from, from Parks and Rec that this would definitely happen in the future. Um, so we recognized and had some discussion about why, how it was a little backwards, but, um, he assured us that he'll do his best to get those to us on time in the future and that it was unintentional. Um, but these are annual leases. They do change slightly depending on cost, um, you know, cost changes. Um, but the Blue Sox bring a lot of people to the city and, and, you know, it's, it's nice that we're keeping up these fields and using them for entertainment. So, um, we did decide, or we did recommend for these for unanimous, um, approval. Any?
Thank you, Counselor, I see Counselor Grinny's hand.
Just to commend the department, McKenzie Stadium looked in outstanding condition this year. It was really nice.
Oh, and it was mentioned that we, um, that the Blue Sox are airing on- It's televised? I thought it was on like a MS or ESPN plus radio or something.
So I thought that was pretty cool, brings a lot of attention, attention to the city.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, recommended that the order be adopted, all the, or, yeah, that the order be adopted.
The leases be approved.
And that the leases be approved. Um, we do a roll call vote for leases, so the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve both leases.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grinny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That you've approved them, thank you. Item twenty-four was tabled in committee. Item twenty-five is, uh, the Committee on Development Government Relations, to whom was referred an order that the city council approve the resolution for the Certified Housing Development Incentive Program project, including a local tax income exemption agreement with Elliott Properties LLC for the redevelopment of one seventy-four Lyman Street into downtown market rate housing. Recommended that the order and resolution be adopted, amending the order from Elliott Properties LLC to C. Elliott Developers LLC, correcting the resolution from twelve units to fourteen units. Counselor Givner?
Um, so this was also recommended unanimously for approval. We were, we had, um, John Dyjek in, in the chambers as well as Chris and Christie Elliott, who, um, are spending some money in Holyoke. Um, it's a nice investment. They just redid a building at four fifteen Main Street and that one is a mix of market, or that's a, that's, I think, smooth studio apartments. Um, and it looks really good, so that's a nice rehabbed property that they did really well. Um, they own a fire sprinkler company, so... They own a fire sprinkler front company, so, um, so it's nice to know that, you know, people are doing business in buildings or, or rehabbing buildings. Um, they are proposing this at one seventy-four Lyman Street and the, the front door actually faces Maple. Um, it's gonna be fourteen units of market housing. It's a, it's a mix of studios and one bedrooms and the first floor will be retail. Um, and that's right at the corner of Maple and Lyman, so that'll really, you know, reinvigorate that corner. Right now, it's, it's basically a, a paint store that's been closed for quite some time. So, um, it'll be nice to see something in there. And, yeah, this was recommended for approval.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, that's a great summary and it was an excellent meeting last night too. I know you attended, Madam President. So, uh, the developers, and I, I'm just so, I'm just so blown away about how, how lucky Holyoke is to have them and their work that they did on Main Street is, uh, so impressive compared to what was there when they first purchased the building and, and went to, came to the city for, uh, for tax credits. And now look what they have. They've got a great, uh, commercial space and then they've got residential space. And, uh, this is gonna be, I, I think, just a game changer. It's gonna, you, you gotta think long-term, Madam President. This is two or, I think she said three years, but, um, I could be mistaken. Uh, there's a lot of personal investment. They bought the building for a couple hundred thousand dollars. Now they're gonna go to a, a bank in Greenfield and they're gonna get the, uh, the financing and the work to go ahead and do all sorts of renovations to it and it's gonna be a very time-consuming process. And the great thing about this program, and the OPIT should be commended for this, for, for sticking with these entrepreneurs because we've got, as I said, we're, we're giving a tax break on the new growth. Well, if we don't do that, there's gonna be no growth. And so this is a, and it's only a five-year thing and it's a sliding scale and right now that building, it really sits at a prominent corner. Anybody that runs a road race knows that's the very first building you see, uh, on, on the right-hand side when you're, when you're running, uh, running the road race. So, a- and they, they happened to mention that last night. So they're, they're in tune with what goes on in the city and that, that's an added bonus. So I enthusiastically support this, thank you.
Anyone else? Alrighty, so, uh, the motion was to adopt this and, uh, we do need a roll call vote, so the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve, uh, the order and resolution and amending it from Elliott Properties LLC to C. Elliott Developers and it's twelve units to fourteen, correcting it from twelve units to fourteen units. The clerk will call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grinny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've passed it, thank you. Okay, um, item twenty-six is, uh, the Committee on Development Government Relations, uh, to whom was referred an order from Marco Crisanti. Um, city council chambers plan memo and sketches. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Uh, Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, for this, for this, uh, communication or order, several floor plans were provided. Um, they were definitely circulated, um, by our, our assistant and you should've all received them. There were, I think, five different floor plans for the chambers. Sorry, yeah, five different floor plans for the chambers that show like some, some slightly different arrangements. Um, they talked about the intention to, you know, pay attention and re, reinvigorate or refurbish the murals and keep, um, the historic feel of the chambers. Um, but this was basically a sharing of information and ideas about the possibilities of the chambers. Um, there was discussion about, you know, aesthetics. Um, there's no action to really be taken at this time. I, I think that there are other options that could be explored and I would suggest that if this is something of interest, um, since revamping the chambers is bound to happen at some point, um, this may wanna be, I don't know, this could be like a subcommittee or maybe a separate group that meets to just talk about it because we did spend a lot more time than I expected on this for it to be just informational. more time than I expected on this for it to be just informational, so there's obviously interest in the aesthetics of the chamber, as there should be some pride here. But I imagine that this is not necessarily a discussion that needs to fully take place in a subcommittee meeting, and if it, if we do feel like it is, then that should probably be, um, a more focused subcommittee meeting where more ideas are presented. I just feel like there was, that, they were just scratching the surface at what's possible in the room, kind of in the layout that it has with like some subtle changes, but if we really wanted to, um, change a lot of things, then I think more people might wanna be involved in the decision and really look at this stuff. So we just wanted to, um, receive this information and mark this as complied with for the time being.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, again, I want to thank the Chair for running a very good meeting, and, uh, I, I really can't add much to what the Chair said, because she summarized it very well, but I, I'm just gonna point out that, that this is Room eleven, where this work that Marco did in Architecture EL, Environmental Life did, is really, really spectacular, and it's a great visual help to, to me, and I look forward to, uh, the mayor hopefully working with our CPA committee, figuring out, and with Architecture EL, figuring out a budget for doing the work that has to be done in this room. And whether or not there was a presidential rostrum way back when, or a clerk's desk, or these desks can be changed, or we change the railing, or we, I mean, I hope we can preserve the murals to the extent possible, um, whatever. It's, uh, there's been changes to this room over the course of the hundred thirty, forty years that, that this has been here, but, and, and I'm sure Kevin could talk about how, how, he wasn't there, I can assure you, but when there were, you know, there weren't fifteen members, there were twenty-something members, twenty...
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one members. I mean, my goodness. And, and, but there, there's, there's a lot to be said for this really important, beautiful building, and this is a beautiful room in a beautiful building. And, and it's, and it's, it needs to be updated and, and preserved. So I said last night that I, I, it's my expectation and hope that the DGR Chair will, will work with the mayor, will work with Marco. I'll happily, I'll happily get involved if, if so asked. And, and, but definitely the DGR Chair needs to work on this and think out what is our next steps. But we, I'm so grateful that the committee voted to move this forward so that we can at least make a presentation. It doesn't sit in a jacket somewhere, but this has gotta be a living, breathing, um, document, and Marco was taking really copious notes, uh, the last night, and I'm sure he's gonna follow up on more intel. So either he'll get hold of, uh, Chair Givner or vice versa, and this is to be continued, and I, I really look forward to additional discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Devine.
Yeah, it, it really was terrific, and I don't know if everybody can get a copy of what we got, uh, last night, but, uh...
It was emailed to everyone.
The interesting thing that, that, and we were, we did, um, let this person know different things about this room. The, the railing you can't change at all, but he thought, with all due respect to the city clerk, he thought this little desk over here was hers. Brenna? He thought this was your desk over here? So, but we straightened out, okay? So, but it was a good, uh, good meeting, and if there's any extra copies of, uh, the different things, that would be great if everybody could have one.
Uh, Counsel Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, I really enjoyed, um, I really enjoyed that meeting. So, um, some of the things that came up, or at least that I really paid close attention to is the actual layout, and one of the things that I, I do realize, and I have realized for a while, that when the public is here speaking, my back is turned to them, and I feel like that's a, like, lack of respect, and I don't intentionally do that. I would never intentionally disrespect someone, but the layout doesn't help. So I think we should really consider on what, if and when we just decide to redo this room. But I also want to weigh in and say that we should allow the public to be part of that process, wherever it goes, whatever committee that this goes to, that we get feedback from the public, because, I mean, it's just not us. The public comes here as well. It's, it's the public space. And so I, I feel that we, we need to hear from the public, how would they like it? So I'm assuming that we could share these slides or these, these diagrams online so that the public can weigh in and think, you know, what would be the best.
It's already on.
Yeah, where do you look at that? A+, alright, thank you.
Great, thanks. Anyone else? So the motion was that the order has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved. Item twenty-seven was tabled in committee. Item twenty-eight, Committee on Development and Government Relations, uh, referred an order that HPD and Mass DOT work to promote a pedestrian safety plan for the employees contracted to work at the Soldiers' Home. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, we basically decided to give this order leave to withdraw, considering that construction is ongoing at the Soldiers' Home, and if we wanted to follow up, we could, another order could be filed, and we can reach out to, uh, Mass DOT and check to see what kind of safety plan they have, if, if we're interested, but, um, I think we decided that since there has been construction going on, clearly people are making it to and from the parking lot.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so the motions that the order's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Onto motions, orders, and resolutions. If we're not voting on it tonight, we're not discussing it tonight. Item twenty-nine, Anderson, filed by Counselor Anderson Burgos, ordered that the DPW repair the sidewalk in front of eighty-six Beacon Street. This is a pressing concern, as the sidewalk is severely uneven, causing elderly residents to trip in a poorly lit area. Please prioritize this.
Could I motion to adopt it now?
Receive and send to DPW? Sure. Yep.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, item thirty is filed by Counselor Bartley. The Public Safety Committee invite DPW Superintendent and City Forester to a future meeting to discuss tree trimming, tree stump removal, tree planting, and Holyoke's Tree Nursery.
Yeah, receive, receive, adopt, and refer to, uh, Public Safety for a future meeting.
Uh, refer to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-one, filed by Counselor Bartley. The City of Holyoke work with DCR to allow the state access to city property to plant trees at the top of the three ninety-one interchange. Receive and refer to DGR.
Yeah, so the motion is to, um, to receive this and to send it to DGR at some point, and to, to have a future meeting.
Great. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item thirty-two is filed by Counselor Bartley. HG&E review the lighting in the parking lot behind City Hall to see if it's properly illuminated. Receive and refer to HG&E and request a communication by November's first meeting.
Uh, some will, but under discussion.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Can I be added on?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Counsel Bacon, I think, wanted to be added on.
Yep, I got it.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so, uh, I, I don't park in the back lot. I, I park out front. I've, I think I park in the back lot rarely, and, and, but I just happened to be over there at some point, and it was pretty dark, and I did speak with Jeff at HG&E, and I think the lights are set on a timer, and he's gonna re-review that. So, uh, the, the discussion is ongoing. He knows I'm filing this order, but discussions are, are already happening, and, and Jeff will, uh, will send something to us, uh, as, as soon as he, as soon as he can. So it's just for, you know, safety reasons, really.
Yep, thank you. Alright, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-three, filed by Counselors Devine and Jenny Rivera, ordered that the Police Chief, Board of Health Director, Mayor, and Law Department meet with the City Council to discuss improving numerous quality of life issues that we have seen, or citizens have expressed concerns with us. We would like to look at current strategies and see if they are effective or what we need to change, including the potential need for additional resources. We also request leadership develop a comprehensive plan, including a map that they can present, containing all the resources currently provided, those planned and needed to achieve both short and long-term objectives. Refer to Public Safety?
Public Safety?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Okay. First of all, I'm, it was me, Counsel Givner, and Counsel Israel Rivera that filed this. Love to have you as co-sponsors.
Item forty-four, too.
Um, but forty-four was the first version. That forty-four should be given leave to withdraw.
So I'm reading thirty-three, and it doesn't have your name on it, but forty-four has your name on it.
Alright, well then that's a clerk's office, most of them.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just reading what's in front of me.
Yeah, it's just, these, these, these things hap, these things happen, but we wanna be accurate. Accuracy is important.
You wanna amend that?
Madam President? So, um...
What was that?
I said accuracy's important, right, Mrs. President?
You want, you wanna amend it, Kev?
I prefer Madam President, but thank you. Continue.
Um, so anyways, uh, I'm happy to have Counselors Devine and Jenny Rivera as co-sponsors, but I'd like to add Jordane Givner and Israel Rivera to thirty-three.
Second.
Send it to Public Safety, and to, uh, give leave to withdraw to item forty-four.
I'll second as well.
Thank you.
Motion's been made to, uh, give item thirty-three... Wait, I give item forty-three, forty-four, leave to withdraw, but add, uh, Counselord Jordane's name to thirty-three.
And Givner and Israel Rivera.
And Givner and Israel Rivera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-four, filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that a proclamation be given to Kate McCoy for forty-four years of dedication as the payroll car and other duties in the HPD.
Be received, and it's completed.
Oh.
Any, can I help you? I just, I heard you guys, so I just wanna make sure we're good. Okay?
Thank you.
So motions have been complied, complied with, Pat?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, complied with.
Yeah, motions complied with.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item thirty-five is filed by Counselor Devine. It's, uh, order for a financial transfer of seven thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars, twenty-six cents, uh, from captain and firefighters to injured on duty, pay period number six. I've been told that this is worth representing three firefighters.
And just to make a motion that we, uh, pass this tonight, since it's an injured-on-duty.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rolls and take action this evening for injured-on-duty.
Can we also suspend rules to take up thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven as a package?
Second.
Thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item, up items thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven as a package. Um, I'm just gonna read them. Uh, thirty-six is filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that there be a transfer of twenty-one thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and sixty-four cents, um, as, uh, follows, from serge, sergeants and patrolmen, um, to injured-on-duty, and I have a note that that represents nine officers. Um, item thirty-seven, that there be a transfer of, uh, twenty-five thousand, sorry, twenty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, uh, sergeants and patrolmen to injured-on-duty. Counselor, mo, the... Counselor Devine?
Um, again, those are for the injured-on-duties, um, and they're usually paid at the same time as this order.
Alright, um, is there any other discussion? Okay, so motions were made and seconded to approve these transfers. If you vote yes, you're voting for the three items, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. Um, and the clerk will call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Madam President, I wonder if we could take up item thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty and send that to Finance?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty as a package and refer to Finance. Um, thirty-eight is, uh, transfer of a hundred fifty thousand dollars from general stabilization to schools capital outlay. Thirty-nine is a transfer, uh, from capital stabilization for a hundred fifty thousand dollars to schools capital outlay. And forty is, uh, transfer of a hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred, um, from capital stabilization to capital outlay field depot. Uh, refer and send to, uh, refer to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
And a copy to the auditor, please.
And a copy to the auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, item...
Forty-one.
Forty-one is a transfer, uh, filed by Counselor Devine of fifty thousand dollars, um, from pay tree climber to contract forestry services. Send to Finance?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-two is, uh, order filed by Counselor Devine, uh, that there be a five thousand dollar transfer, uh, contracted services to licensing agent.
Be received and sent to Finance?
Send to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the same with item forty-three, please?
Second.
Okay. Um, item forty-three is filed by Counselor Devine, and it is, uh, that the city accept the provisions of the community compact grant speed management plan, fifty thousand dollars, no match. Uh, refer to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not doing forty-four. Uh, forty-five, filed by Counselord Jordane, that the DPW please repair the potholes on Old Bassett Road.
This has already been complied with. We can just call it complied with.
Okay.
Second.
Um, motion that the order's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Forty-six is filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, ordered that the DPW Director and Conservation Director provide an update either in writing or in person as to the progress made in implementing the urban, urban forestry grant monies for twenty-four, twenty-five. Counselor?
Finance, please.
Could I just make a friendly amendment, just to send this also to the Forestry Department, please, Mr. Toole? Second.
Sure, so refer to Finance with a copy to the Forestry Department. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item forty-seven is filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, that the City Council approve a scope of work change for a contract between Wisteriahurst and the CPA Committee, so remaining funds from a CPA project, which came in under budget, can be used to include plaster work in the marble lobby, the great hall, the music room, and the silk room.
Finance.
Send to Finance.
Hang on, please.
Counselor Sullivan?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and adopt.
Second.
The, the, this committee's done fantastic work.
Yep.
Uh, we've seen the stuff going on at the museum. Uh, let's not hold it up. What's the amount, Mike? I, I don't know the exact amount. It's just what's, it's what's, what's available still in the fund.
I wanna say twenty-four thousand, but...
Yeah.
Uh, it's in the packet. It's forty thousand. Counselor McGrath Smith, we're not gonna have a whole thing on this tonight, though. If this turns into like lots of questions, we're just referring it to committee, okay? Thank you. Counsel McGrath Smith?
Uh, you have the documents, forty-seven, in your packet. Um, the original order's ninety-five thousand. This is for forty-nine thousand, a hundred and fifty.
So the motion was made and seconded to take action tonight and vote, uh, in favor, so is there other discussion?
I'd like it to go to Finance, please. This can wait two weeks.
Does anyone wanna withdraw their motion, or no? Okay?
I'm just, excuse me?
Yeah.
I agree with Counsel Sullivan. This has been going on for a long time. People were complaining about the wall and not being done, um, to, and, and I, I'm not gonna have a Finance meeting till I think the end of October, so I, my feeling is, is along with Counsel Sullivan to pass it tonight.
Okay. Counselord Jordane?
I'll be voting no on process. Again, if this was that important, that somebody from this group and the Wisteriahurst would have reached out to me and explained that this was gonna be voted on tonight, and would have asked, and that we could have had the details, how's the progress going, all of this. I don't wanna make this a habit, that people just come in here, boom, 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 like we're a rubber stamp. I just, I don't choose to operate in that manner. Again, is it wonderful? Will we all probably pass it unanimously, I'm sure, but that's just a habit I don't wanna get into. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Alright, so on the motion, um, the motion was made to approve and adopt this evening, and, uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to adopt item forty-seven. All right, so on the motion, um, the motion was made to approve and adopt this evening. And, uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to adopt item 47.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Greeney?
No.
Jordane?
No.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
No.
Ocasio?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Uh, yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Seven yeas, six nays.
So that didn't pass?
Motion to reconsider and send to Finance.
Second.
Motion to, motion has been made to reconsider and send to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, late files. Um, item 48, filed by Counselor Devine and Rivera. This is a duplicate?
Yeah.
Do you wanna give it?
Give it, leave, that one, leave to withdraw.
All right, I'll read it again, but it's a duplicate. Uh, filed by Counselors Devine and Jenny Rivera, that the DPW Director, DPW Board of Commissioners interim engineer appear before Finance Committee, uh, about identifying public and private ways and non-accepted streets. Um, motion has been made to give leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 49 is filed by Counselors Devine and McGrath Smith, that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts repair and block top Old Bassett Road. As according to the assessor's office, the Commonwealth owns this road. Item 45 should be given leave to withdraw as it is not accepted. Okay. Um...
Are we gonna take final action? Wait a minute. On this, Counselor Devine?
I don't know.
What are you proposing? Otherwise, if it's late file, has to go to Finance unless we suspend the rule.
Well, I, then suspend the rules and take it up tonight.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to, has been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take final action tonight?
Just under discussion?
All those in favor? Oh, sorry, under discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with this completely to suspend the rules. I just wanna, uh, before we get into a big rush here, I just want to make sure this goes to the appropriate places and somebody is following up with the appropriate party. So I would assume, um, and I don't know how we're gonna do this, but I would assume that we would send this to Mass DOT and then we would ask Ms. Duffy and Mr. Vellus to follow up with it. Does that make sense to the makers of the word?
Sounds like a plan.
All right. Great.
So, so that's, that's my, that's my motion, my friendly amendment.
Okay, so the friendly amendment would be that we direct, uh, this order to, uh, and copy to the, uh, our state delegation, uh,
And Mass DOT.
And Mass DOT. Under discussion? Counselor Jordane and then Counselor Bacon?
Yeah, all that sounds great. I would ask to strike the last sentence, uh, on the premise that 45 has been complied with. And I do wanna just be careful, councilors, that we're well aware that the city does grade private ways. Uh, we, and we even pave private ways. The city has not developed a policy that this is somehow taboo and for the hundred, for the people that live on the hundred private ways in the city who are receiving taxes, they, I mean, the classic example just recently is West Cherry Street. It's been graded how many times? And it's, it's a lot longer than this. So that's a full grading. I mean, what happened the other day is basically just filling some potholes in the grading of it. Um, we've been doing those type of basic services. I'm totally supportive if we can get the state to pave this and do this. But the second part sort of implies like, we don't, if it's a private way, we don't want the city to do anything with this. And that just isn't what the city's longstanding policy is. I do agree, we should ask them to do it. But I would like the last sentence removed and just do the first sentence because that is true. I think that's something we all want.
Okay, Counselor Bacon?
I was just going to suggest that we also send it to DGR so there'll be somewhere that it's tracked here.
Okay. Counselor Bartley, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll certainly second what Counselors Bacon and Jordane said. I would just point out that this is not a private way. According to this, this order, it is, it's owned by the Commonwealth. So if, it's all well and good that we do private ways, uh, that's great. But if this is owned by the Commonwealth, um, they need to sort of maintain it. And I'm hopeful that by taking this action and following their lead, uh, tracking it in DGR that, uh, sent to Mass DOT, Ms. Duffy and Mr. Vellus will, will get on them. I'm, I'm sure of that. So that's, I second all that stuff.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion to amend is that we will refer this order, wait, we're gonna refer this order to the state legislature, Rep. Duffy and Senator Vellus. Um, we're also going to send this to DGR and we're going to strike the last sentence in the order.
And Mass DOT.
And...
DOT.
Send to the Mass DOT. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 50 filed by myself, order that the Police Department